Good evening, my name is John. This is my first meeting with you. Good evening. Welcome to the September, we're doing the scheduled meeting of the Port Edward Board of Education. And by way of a couple of announcements for four minutes. Our Board President, Tom Guyron, is not with us at the moment, he may appear later. He is delayed at work. In my capacity as Vice President, I will begin the meeting. Third order, John, if he arrives. Before we start, I have a couple of other announcements to make. School Board meetings, as with any public meeting, exist and take place to allow the business of the government body to occur. Public comment, etc. meetings is a welcome option. It allows citizens to be heard and voice opinions and offer information on their perspectives. However, for this to take place in a respectful and non-threatening manner, no demonstrations, applause, cheering, moving about the room, pounding the floor, or other audible or physical displays are permitted. If such actions take place, should be ruled out of order. Please listen politely to all speakers, and refrain from displays of support or opposition for what other citizens like yourself have to say. All will be heard, all will be respected. Thank you. I will call the meeting of the Port Edward School Board to order. Go, go, please.
Dan Martinson.
Here.
Kerry Hildegren.
I'm here.
Leo Thomasgaard.
Here.
Kathy McGrath.
Here.
And John is hopefully arriving soon. The next board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 13th. The regular meetings are usually the second Wednesday of each, uh, the second Wednesday of each meeting, usually at the elementary school library. Administrative reports. Whoops, I missed, I apologize, I missed the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded, and to approve the agenda for today, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foesed, motion is carried. Jumping to three, administrative reports. Report on the 21, 22 preliminary enrollment review and part of proposal, metrics-based mitigation strategies in exigency circumstances, Superintendent Groan.
Hopefully, no, this works. My report this evening, and I'm just gonna start and say good evening to, uh, parents, board members, community members, staff, and I even see a few students here. So I get the privilege each month of providing a report to the Board regarding some topic about the district. Well, I mentioned last month that you were here, that I was excited to see so many people here because, obviously, you were impressed with my speaking abilities, I had many football games when I announced. Tonight's crowd really makes me question that and wonder if it's another reason here. So, I have to try to, at least, let them move for a moment. There are two topics that I would like to report on to the Board tonight. First one is the easy one. An update on our enrollment for this year. These numbers are preliminary, and we haven't really, uh, yet begun to compile our final report to the state. That'll come in the next couple of weeks. The reason I say they're preliminary, we're still in the process of working through all the transfers that take place during the course of the summer. To cut to that point, basically, sometimes other, other schools are delaying requesting transfers from us if we had a student transfer out. We just had one today, and we knew the student wasn't going to be with us three weeks ago. And we finally got the transfer made today, so, just getting all of that straightened out. But, to cut to that point, our preliminary enrollment at the moment is approximately 450 students in our seats. Just so the audience is clear, the state does not use that particular number for funding purposes. They use a three-year average of our enrollment for funding purposes. However, um, and there is a lot that goes into that, open enrollment in students, open enrollment out students, and it all goes through a calculation that the state uses. However, I'll compare that to last year, we were at approximately 439 students in last year. So overall, this is pretty good news for the district. This will, if that number sticks in that approximate range of about 450, that should provide us with a little bump in our three-year rolling average down the line. So that is good news. My second of the two topics, which is why I'm sure many of you are here and wanting to hear about, is regarding the plan that I'm putting forth to the School Board tonight. And is on the agenda, it's referenced as a "metrics-based mitigation strategy in exigency circumstances." Now, just clear that up, that's lawyer speak for urgent circumstances. So what it is. The plan I'm putting forth, I'm asking the Board to direct me to, uh, well, what I'm asking the Board to do is that masking will remain optional, however, the Board would direct me in the event that we are at either a specific number of COVID positive cases or specific number of quarantines to implement masking for a period of two weeks. I'm asking that those numbers be set at, and I will explain these numbers in a moment, but I'm asking that these numbers be set at, uh, for COVID cases, positive confirmed cases, at 1.5% of the population within a school building, or 8% of the population for students in the school building if they are in quarantine. These measures, again, would be in place for a two-week period and would be reassessed at the end of those two weeks. The measures would be applied to individual school buildings independently. Well, these numbers seem small, and I have regaled over this. I have gone back and forth over this, consulted our school nursing staff, consulted our principals. Keep in mind that we are a small district. With masking being overall optional, we are in a position in which quite a large number of students would likely be quarantined as close contacts if we experienced three, four, five cases of COVID within a building. To give you an example, in May of this year, the elementary school experienced four positive COVID cases over a weekend, which resulted in additional 48 quarantines. It was a 2.2% positive rate and 26% quarantine rate. We did experience a handful of situations last year that left us with 60-plus students and staff being out. And speaking with a colleague today in another district, they, today they placed over 35 students into quarantine due to one positive case. We had that same experience last year. Numbers that significantly exceed the positivity rate in a, in a school building that I'm proposing would likely result either in significant classroom or possibly school closure to in-person learning. I truly want to avoid it. I want the students in school. This plan is purely local in place. We are using numbers that our health staff and our principals believe are somewhat manageable within our limited capacities. Keep in mind, contacting the families of 60-plus students is no small task, and even more challenging on a Saturday or Sunday or 9:00 PM on a Tuesday. I view this plan as an ability to tap our brakes before we get to the scene of the accident, so to speak. It's a way for us to slow down. Maybe another way of putting it is if the cows start escaping the pasture, we want to get them back in quickly. The goal of this plan is to keep school open. What this plan is not is a permanent masking plan. It's not that, not asking for that. Excuse me, I flipped my page. We've been through a tremendous experience, all of us. Everybody in this room has been affected by this pandemic. We have, over the course of the year, had experiences that, over the course of the past year and a half, had experiences that were unimaginable. Through all of that, we have done things here in Port Edwards that are unique to our district. We held prom, albeit masks, before any other school in our area that is tempted to do that. We did that with the blessing of the Health Department. We opened school lapses, despite many schools across the state, even some in our own region not opening in person or not fully opening, or significantly changing their models of instruction. Ultimately, I believe that we can have some measures in our back pocket, and that's what I'm asking for this evening. Hopefully, slow down what may end up being somewhat runaway train anyhow. But these measures would allow me to act quickly and to be checked on that action at the end of the prescribed period. The current pandemic has caused havoc in our systems, not just school. And as I know, we are all aware, education has been one of the harder-hit areas. Keeping students at home, either because we had to be in virtual instruction or during a quarantine period, is a tremendous experience. We have experienced learning loss amongst our students. But, we have work to carry on here in Port Edwards and do as much as possible to give our students a full experience. It was tough on everyone last year, students, teachers, staff, parents, community members. It was tough on our health staff, our school nurse, many of you have not met her. She was new to our school last year, Katie Ward is in attendance tonight. And I personally thank Katie and our health staff, Betsy, for doing all that they did last year to get us through this. I personally thank our principals and our teachers as well. This proposal tonight allows for the district to implement measures if necessary to try to stem what can quickly become a flood and an overwhelming flood. I know, I've said many times in letters, that, you know, I thank a lot of these people, but I really do want to recognize any of our staff here in attendance tonight for the effort they put in last year to keep school in session. Every single staff member in this district worked hard to do that. This plan, again, is meant to be local, responsive to our local situation. We've already been faced with challenges at school this year. Our volleyball team lost matches tomorrow night, in fact, due to another team being quarantined. That could quickly be us. But what's even worse is that those students are now spending the next couple of weeks doing school by some of the means. That also could be us. Finally, as I know, many of you have planned to speak, many of you have questions. I ask for the sake of the Board, mine and yours, as well as audience members, that you are able to, that we allow our Board to conduct its business tonight. This is our Board, mine included. Not only do I work for them, I live here. Just want them to be able to conduct the business, I ask that we allow them the time to do that this evening. I know they will listen to your remarks and your comments. I'm hopeful that what I have offered is a way forward at this time for our district so that we can get on with the other important business in our schools. I like to say it's the three R's, the reading, the writing, the arithmetic. I know, writing's got it done here. Again, just one last time to reiterate. The plan tonight that I'm asking for is to keep masking optional, however, if we hit the metrics as I've described, then that would allow me the resource to implement masking for a short period of time to see if we can stem the tide further that will likely come from quarantines in close contacts. I have discussed this in great detail with Donna and Carol, our two principals, Katie, our school nurse, and, and other staff that have to implement these pieces. And, none of this is truly manageable, I will say this, but as we talked, we felt that this was really where we could land and still have some time to, hopefully, implement some strategies to keep school open. Thank you, members of the Board.
Sal, would you be able to just to run through the actual numbers that was going through?
Give me about, give me just a second. So, what I'm looking for is a positive, so what we do is we do, we do a constant monitoring of what's going on.
No, no, no.
And I just, and I'll get to what those numbers are, so we do that constant monitoring. Um, and so what we're looking at is a positive case count at school at one point, at a school of 1.5% or greater of the total school occupancy by students and staff. Um, our occupancy rate at the high school right now is approximately 298. At the elementary school, approximately 216. That 1.5% rate is four cases of high school, three cases at the elementary school. Uh, or quarantine rates that are greater than 8%. At the high school, that's 24, at the elementary school, that is 17. And I would just add to that that most of the second semester last year, with just a couple of small exceptions, we would have never hit those rates. So those rates were not, we would have hit those rates, we would have had masking, it really, if we'd had, but, and again, that's hard to always say, hindsight's 20/20. Again, those, those rates, um, I know there are some schools that looked at, uh, that are looking at a 5% rate. 5% would be 15 students in our middle school, high school. We would be shut down. I'm just gonna tell you, based on quarantines, school, we wouldn't be here. We would have that many students that went on quarantine. It really, this was a number that we were trying to tap the brakes on. And again, look at it as a two-week, tap the brakes, reassess.
Thank you, Mr. Groan. Uh, point B, under Administrative Reports, report on the style of school, the elementary, by Principal Christie.
Normally, I don't have to stand up because there's not a lot of people. Do I need to invite them? Can I just be loud? My report's simply just about our first day, our first week at the elementary school. Um, each year, we, we have a theme. Um, one year it was superhero theme, we talked about superheroes, we don't wear cakes, the different kinds of heroes. There was a kindness theme another year. This year, our first day of school theme was flash in a new year. We had a beach theme, and the teachers wore lifeguard t-shirts, and we had surfboards set up in the front, floaty mats, inner tubes, and we put Lays on the kids as they walked in, and they could take their first day of school picture in front of the little setup. So, um, it was a really good first day of school, we are going to use that theme throughout the year. Um, things like dive into a good book. Um, we have a bulletin board up right now that says, "Catch the Reading Wave." Our guidance counselor is going to do something saying, "Don't give any peer pressure." Anyway, um, so we'll use that theme throughout the year and, um, and, um, just kind of take that beach theme just to teach the kids some other social things, use it academically, socially, and, and carry that throughout as we go. We'll have some Hawaiian day themes where kids can dress up in, beach themed gear, things like that. Um, the other thing that we started new this year is our safety patrols. Um, we have some fifth graders, I think about 12 of them, that volunteered to be safety patrols this year. Uh, they are down on the corner of Fifth and, or Bumper. Fifth and Bumper, um, with our crossing guard, and they are helping kids cross the street safely. And they are also putting a flag up in the morning, um, helping the kids get off the bus, and after school, taking the flag down properly, and, um, being kind of our leaders of the school. So that's been a new, a new thing, um, that has been a great addition to our fifth graders who are now at our elementary school. So, um, we welcomed almost 30 new students to our building, and so that's been exciting as well, so. It's been a pretty good start.
All right, I'll run a little late. I made it. Mail must go through, right? Okay. So now we're going to 3C, report on starting school at Wood School High School, Principal Short.
Looking at the kids. Uh, our school climate is doing awesome this year. Um, we got feedback from Open House, and, um, I'd say about 75%, 80% maybe attended. Our computers were gone, pictures were taken, kids were smiling, kids were grilling, eating the brats, um, giving, giving tours, and it was just a lot of fun. It was a great way to start the year, I want to thank Student Council, Mr. Van De Hey. I think they're gonna tweak it a little bit like next year, make it even bigger and better. Um, otherwise, our high school sports are underway. A couple stuff happens with some teams calling us, but otherwise, they're practicing. Middle school has started now, and this week, um, the school, or the class officers and their, um, or the class officers and their advisors are meeting, and we are starting to plan homecoming, and the kids are really excited. Um, it starts September 25th and goes through October 2nd. So, we're looking at how we're gonna manage that, what that's gonna look like, and so that's our, our next, we've always got a carrot out there, and that's the carrot for the high school kids right now. Middle school started their sports, um, they seem to be really happy, and our board policy is doing real well. The kids are talking, playing, and everything's going well right now. So, next, uh, October, and then we have the Student Council members just start reporting. Any questions?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is questions and comments from people in attendance. Persons who wish to address Board of Education may make a statement as long as it pertains to a specific agenda item. Individuals do not expect to engage in discussion with the members of the Board of Education. Board of Education President may or may not respond to statements made. Each person will be allowed up to five minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes total for this agenda item. And we can waive that last rule when we get that, if we need to. Based down on all by the Board, so. Not sure what's chief is first here, but I'll just go down the line. First one I have to wish to address the Board, Jessica Hanson.
Should I speak here? Is this on? Can you hear me? Right? Some of the others who don't know me, my name is Jessica. Um, I spent much Port Edward's here for all of my school career. I am here to talk about masking tonight. Um, I'm a proud American, Republican, nurse, and a mother to three Port Edward students. Like most of you, I wish this all can were over and we weren't here having this debate. I did not wear a mask for most of the summer as we saw COVID numbers consistently drop in our area. I'm also vaccinated, and I believe in their effectiveness. I don't get my information from Fox News, I don't get it from CNN either. I have friends, family members, and fellow political parties members that are on both sides of the debate. My point is, I'm not one to just follow the crowds, to do my own research and inform my own opinions about things. I'm also a registered nurse of over 16 years. Part of my master's degree included doing evidence-based research. If you're not familiar with what that is, and you couldn't gather the information on your own, I encourage you to research what evidence-based articles truly mean. I've worked on vet surgeon, channel level 2 ER, and outpatient clinics. I'd like to discuss the Delta variant. I've been monitoring COVID hospitalization rates and ICU numbers around the country. Hospitals in the South where COVID has really ramped up are filling up. On August 26th, at least 22 hospitals in Mississippi had no ICU beds and their state's healthcare system is on the brink of collapse. Some hospitals appear to have reached, approached near capacity, but they don't have the availability to staff the ICU beds. At the time of this article, only 15 ICU beds remained open across the entire state. 63 patients were waiting for an ICU bed, nearly half of them were COVID-19 patients. Nurses and doctors are seeing more kids in the ICU now than ever before. Pediatric cases accounts for 20%, 21% of current COVID, excuse me, current COVID cases. A few weeks ago, children of Mississippi Hospital in Jackson, Mississippi reported 30 pediatric patients as a result of COVID-19. 100% of these children who are under the age of 18 were unvaccinated, eight were in the ICU. Two of the complications arising from these pediatric patients is RSV and multi-system inflammatory syndrome. A rare but serious condition that follows a COVID-19 infection. This past week, there are more pediatric patients being treated for this condition, and I hope this is the most we've ever had at one time. Now, I realize this is not the South, but if we follow the trends of last year, our time is coming. Last year, cases peaked in the South around August. Our peak came much later in the fall and early winter. As verified through a long conversation with the Wood County Health Department, we're already beginning to see rise in the number of cases in Wood County and the surrounding areas, and it's continually getting worse. For the month of August, Wood County alone saw 500 cases of COVID. For the first week of September, we've already seen 235 cases. I've been watching two hospitals in different areas of our country where hospitals are struggling. Both hospitals show consistent numbers indicating that 80 to 90% of those that end up in the ICU are unvaccinated. Why do I ask, am I talking about vaccines when I'm here having a meeting about masks? I bring this up because my six and nine-year-old are not eligible to receive a vaccine yet. The only way, aside from not sending them to school that I can see to protect them, is to wear masks. Is it fun? No. Have I had to wear a mask to work since March of 2020? Yes. And do I look forward to the day when this all ends? Absolutely. Do I feel like my rights have been violated in any way? No. I keep hearing that people's constitutional rights are being violated. Though where in the Constitution doesn't mention wearing a mask as violating one's personal rights? From what I understand, the last few hour meeting was chaotic. Some people spoke who are not, who are not only, are not a parent to a grandparent, but have likely never volunteered nor stepped foot inside the school since the day they may have graduated. I respect each person's freedom to make their own choices, but when your choices affect the safety of my child, this is where I feel I need to step in. What I am proposing is that any student or staff member who is around a child under the age of 12, wear a mask until vaccines are available for children under the age of 12. 60 days after vaccines are available for those under the age of 12, go ahead and eliminate the restrictions back to masks are optional. But until then... May I just, Andrew?
Okay, next speaker is Sarah Brewer.
Hello, my name is Sarah, and both my children attend the middle school and elementary school here in Port Edward. I come here today as a concerned parent, but also as a concerned professional. I have a bachelor's in health education, a master's in public health with an emphasis epidemiology, which for those who don't know is the study of disease. I truly wish that we were not experiencing this again this year. A new report came out yesterday from the American Academy of Pediatrics. In the past week, 26.8% of COVID cases were children under the age of 18. In the past previous weeks, the numbers were about average at 22%. After declining early summer, child cases have increased exponentially with 750,000 cases added between August 5th and September 2nd. I also have a chart for you today after this to see the most recent release of hospitalization data from ages 0 to 17. And if you can see, this is where we are now, I won't present this in the beginning, but you can see it's pretty high. The highest it's ever been. I'm sure people argue that the statistics of fatality are small, but imagine telling that to parents who just lost a child. Or imagine telling your child that their best friend just died, but that's okay. Statistics are small, I lost my mic. The mic, that's what I did, that's it. Okay. It is very probable to extend increasing mortality rates. I cannot understand what the resistance is to wearing masks if it can save even one child's life. This is not including the possibility of reducing the odds of long-haul COVID symptoms. A simple inconvenience can make a dramatic difference in the safety of a child's life. Aside from children, I'm shocked that the school board would allow employees to also be in danger. Another myth being perpetuated by political databases is that masks make you inhale CO2. This has been developed numerous times. I am a veteran, I've spent a lot of time in law enforcement here, which for those who don't know is boots, suits, masks, gloves. I was also aircrew, which meant I had a special garbage bag put over my head in that situation. I can show you, it takes a lot to make me feel uncomfortable, and I have seen more people pass out by standing straight up than having to wear any of these kind of protective gear. Last year, masks helped limit the spread of COVID. Last year, masks helped limit the spread of COVID, which kept the school open. In turn, limited the number of influenza cases and even the back school run. I added in my speech, as the superintendent stated, we had numerous incidents last year that could have possibly shut down a school. Imagine how it would be this year without any sort of masking involved. I implore the, hey. I implore this Board of an academic institution to err on the side of science, science. None of that on politics, bullying, or opinion. Science has changed the world and should not be more due to politics and conspiracies. I also will conclude with the response that those who say then just keep your kid home. I tried. I tried that. There's no online virtual option this year for either school. And when I took my kids out of school for the weekend, I was told it was not an excuse absence to kind of see where the numbers were. So again, parents are trying. We deeply implore you to consider wearing masks and keeping us all safe and keeping school open. I don't know how parents can do this and work and then expect the school to shut down if that's, if, you know. What are you gonna do? I conclude with the same speech as Jessica, the chair, that our defense has said. And implore you to consider masking until vaccines are available for children under 12. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Amanda Ervin.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Hi, Amanda. Um, and you're gonna hear lots of facts today, lots of statistics, and lots of evidence. And I just wanted to share one thing from my life. And I'm sorry I'm in a car. So on this day, on June 20th, 2013, I was in labor. You guys can experience that. You know what that feels like. I'm sure everyone here has experienced what labor is, whether it's themselves, a wife, a loved one. During labor, I got a phone call. That phone call was from my squadron commander. Funny, huh? My squadron commander told me I had 48 hours to report and sign my deployment orders. Imagine being in labor and having a phone call that said you have to come in in 48 hours and sign your deployment orders. I did, because I made a choice years ahead of time that I would do anything for this country. I would lay my life on the line. I committed to coming home in a box, putting an American flag for the right to choose. For my children's right to choose. In this era where it's getting ripped from them, where I have to hear, mommy, I don't want to wear a mask, I can't breathe. That breaks my heart. I did not leave my baby to go deploy a coordination to stand up for the rights of this nation, to have that ripped from them in this day. I did. And you guys shouldn't either. Mr. Krone, earlier you said in Maine, there was four cases of COVID. And I thank you for giving us that data. Because in my family, we had four cases of COVID. Four, three of my four children who attended Fort Edwards had COVID. So that means one other child had COVID. One other child that wasn't in my family. Half of school was quarantined, but that quarantine didn't result in any other cases. So I feel like your numbers flawed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandy Rasner.
My name is Sandy Rasner and I'm a registered nurse. Uh, do I believe that Dr. Google is credible? No, of course not. As a master prepared registered nurse who has done a lot of evidence-based research, I rely on scientific evidence that guides my daily practice of patient care. I've been a nurse for 39 years, ER and ambulatory care, and I've seen many tragedies in my career. COVID-19 has been by far the most serious unpredictable virus I have ever seen in my entire career. Let me refresh your memory of 2020. By March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization declared a global pandemic due to COVID-19. Large numbers of COVID-positive patients leading hospitalization, which began to overload the healthcare system. As 2020 advanced, so did the cases of COVID-19. COVID-19 became the third-leading cause of death in the United States. There were over 375,000 COVID-19 deaths in 2020. Were these deaths preventable? For the most part, yes. COVID-19 is spread by human-to-human transmission via respiratory viruses. Coughing, sneezing, coughing. Wearing face masks, performing hand hygiene, and practicing social distancing help stop the spread of COVID-19. This has been scientifically proven. This map of COVID cases in Wisconsin shows the confirmed cases by age group. So as of, this is where we were last year, and as of August 29th, 2021, we're heading up in that direction again. As you can see, the cases peaked in the fall of 2020. Unfortunately, many individuals have become laid back with wearing masks and practicing social distancing, resulting in increased numbers of COVID-19 at the end of August 2021. Folks, we are headed in the wrong direction. Do I like wearing a mask? No. However, I wear a mask to protect not only me, but you. Yes, I am fully vaccinated. Unfortunately, COVID vaccines have not been approved for children under the age of 12. The only way to protect them from this deadly virus is to have them wear a mask when they are in home or in school. If you don't make a big deal about wearing masks, your kids won't make a big deal about it either. There's books out there that you can read to them that they want to understand. And now, wearing the mask does not reduce oxygen intake. The claims of reducing oxygen has been debunked many times. That's a false. How would you feel if your child ended up, your grandchild, your relation would end up getting COVID, being in ICU and intubated? This is what it looks like, folks. This is an intubated kid. And now, because you didn't want them to wear, you didn't want them to wear a mask because you didn't agree with masking. This is, this is not about you. It's not about me. It's about protecting the most vulnerable against this deadly virus. I cannot emphasize enough the importance of wearing masks in schools or when when crowds protect those that cannot protect themselves. This is my relation, Ms. Ann, 11 months old, hospitalized with COVID-19. She survived, but the long-term effects of COVID-19 will not be known for years. Thank you for your time. Please make the right ethical choice about masking now. The statistics are out there and they don't look good. We're heading in the wrong direction again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Joe Bush.
Good evening.
Evening.
Uh, thank you everybody for coming out. Uh, this won't take five minutes. We can debate the effectiveness of masks all night long. There's doctors on both sides. We can debate the effectiveness of vaccines. There's doctors on both sides. Again, this comes down to parental rights. And as a parent, I should have a right to say whether my child or should or should not wear a mask. As a parent. Also, it comes down to, you know, most health professionals, as far as I know, would consider a mask a medical device. So in the state of Wisconsin, in order to prescribe a medical device, you have to have a license to practice medicine. I don't believe anybody on the board has it. So I'll just leave it at that. I believe if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. I'll support it. If you want to get a vaccine, get a vaccine. I'll support that. This is still America. I mean, if my daughter doesn't like the meatloaf on Tuesday at school, we don't force her to eat it, right? So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Karen I, please accept.
Uh, I'm a resident and a former court teacher and I'm very grateful for her, Emma. I give the Board, the administration, and staff a great big thank you for all the things that they did last year to keep our kids in school, and this includes masking. All over the news, you hear, uh, stories about the great initiatives that schools are implementing this year to keep kids safe. Our was doing all of these things last year. Our district broke the law. So we need to keep doing what we were doing that kept all the kids safe last year. Thank you.
Next is Shane Robinson.
Hey, how's everybody doing today? Um, I was here last month. Uh, I went on a ramble about pushing by any for immune systems. I still stand with that. I also believe that, uh, if you guys go to a mandated mask, you are taking away constitutional rights just because you're taking up the right of the way to choose. Hello? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Justin and Renee Green. Okay. Moving on to Trenton Maury.
My name is Trenton Maury. I'm a freshman here at Fort Edwards. I live in and attending the school district in Village Mount Levis. I may not be old enough to vote yet, and I may not be old enough to make full decisions in my life, but I am old enough to I am old enough to stand up for myself and be tolerant on how I feel and how I think my life should be. How I want to live, act, walk, and breathe. My parents, all of these parents behind me, are here to speak for me and I do so much to appreciate that. And now it's my turn to speak up for myself. Because all we need to hear first hand from the students, we have students that's poor and rich, score decent. Because as I stand here and speak, forty. You know, as I stand here and speak, you can all see my peers, all ages, they stand behind me, and they also stand with me. Wearing a mask hinders our socialization. And now see discriminates, because we are not trying to recognize people by the way they walk, their figure, and all the discriminating things. Instead of looking at their faces and knowing who they are, you know. We can no longer truly tell how a person is put behind a mask. You can't understand a teacher or another student talking behind a mask. We are trained to be able to hear them. At sports, I'm not a ref who's playing without a mask because I play large round with all my house. I watched my peers last year in that spot that they're wearing masks. They're sweating through the mask breathing, and then constantly taking up for what mask to put in there. You're making me wear a mask. Up on top of that is like asking me not to put sports on me because I find wait, the word mask during sports, I won't be able to play because I won't be able to breathe. Last year in a masked drink school, I was constantly being asked to speak up. Oh, I'm here speaking off of a mask and asking you to leave it that way, leave it optional. If some of my peers are hard to wear a mask, that's fine, fuck them, because that is their, their right. But leave me and the others that can't speak up with a mask, that can't breathe in a mask, and honestly, who can wear a mask and play? Leave us to our right, our decision to not mask. It doesn't take 15 minutes of contact for something to attach itself to your mask. It's not harming you because you are choosing that mask and you keep breathing, waiting for 15 minutes and hours, and all day at school. You're harming yourself that way. And the board members are harming us that way if you mandate that you don't mask. I know a lot, I know you want to protect us and you think it's your job to do that best, but if you mandate a mask, you're harming us. It's our decision. It's our parents' responsibility to protect us, not yours. Please make your point the right way as the ambassador, it's not against us. You're making this decision, but you mandate a mask, it's our right to do it. We're expecting this school on. But how is there will be no school, no teacher, no principal, no school owner? We want to be here. We want to be in school. We want to learn and socialize, we want to have fun. We want to be kids, or you want our teachers to have a hundred teachers and support them, independence. Thank you for your time.
Going to the board or opposition to Christina, do you want to speak? Christina Maury, do you?
Oh, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay.
You wanted to do a demonstration, showing why you guys left our reputation.
Okay, next up on, oh, we have a sign sheet.
I'm sorry.
We have a sign and sheet?
Yeah, to speak.
Yeah, if you wish to speak, I can put you on the, on the list. I'll put you on the list and then I'll call. Okay. Next up is, uh, Matt Trannell.
Good evening. Um, thank you again for taking this opportunity to speak. I like a couple of others have said, you know, there's a lot that we can debate. And so, uh, I, you know, don't really want to come here every month and debate masks. So, uh, I think we need to come up with a solution that everybody can agree upon. Maybe it's both sides giving and taking to where we don't have to come every month and debate what we like and don't like about masks. Um, but what I'd like to do is kind of, um, instead of picking a topic to dive into, just kind of go off of last month's. Last month was the first time I've ever, I've ever attended a board meeting. Um, and Leo, uh, you had made the comment multiple times how happy you were to see us all here. Um, and that normally you guys are here by yourself, which is where you are. Uh, and I apologize for that. Um, as a parent of multiple students in the front of the school district, I should attend and I should know what's going on, um, and everything. So I apologize and I plan to make an effort going forward to the time and as I can. Something that, um, I didn't, you know, that didn't sit right with me, um, after the last meeting was, you know, I don't know how many people talked, probably 18 or 15 or 18 people that talked. And, you know, it was a pretty unanimous, um, view on, on what the parents and the people in the community wanted regarding masking. And it was very disheartening to sit and listen to all of that and then to hear you tell me how excited you were that we were here because you really wanted to hear from us. And then we get to stand up and read off of a pre-printed sheet of paper that you had prepared hours before the board meeting, letting us know your stance on that. And so to me, that just didn't sit well with, you know, what, with what the board is for. And so, uh, And so, some emails to Kyle Cronin were asked, okay, what's the duty of the board? What's their job? You know, how should the board operate? And I'm gonna quote directly from the links from Kyle. It says, "The school board members are elected or appointed members of the community who pursue a vision for the local schools, reflecting the needs of the students, the wishes of the voters, and the consensus of the community." The wishes of the voters and the consensus of the community. So, that's your job description. Now, I understand some of you have differing opinions on masking. But in this position, your job isn't to let your opinions swing. Your job is to carry out the wishes of the voters and the consensus of your community. And so, I would implore you to listen. If you haven't, you listened last month, you're listening tonight. A lot of people have emailed you on where they stand. And I think it's pretty clear the vast majority of where they stand. So, your job is to carry out the consensus of the community. So, I hope that today you'll listen, and you'll take that in that that is part of your job. Instead of just, hey, this is my opinion. You know, and I understand if you differ, and that's your opinion. But in the elected position, you know, your role is to do that. Now, last month, the proposal was that we mask the elementary kids. How many of you are typing?
I don't even know.
Okay. Last month, the proposal from Mrs. McGrath was to optional the high school and mandate the elementary school or K through sixth graders because there wasn't a vaccine available for little kids. So, I guess the question is, this evening, now that's changing because now we're saying we need to mask the high school kids. I don't know what changed, but something changed. So, for me, I am very confused because the reasoning is everything all that I feel. There's never just a this is why I feel this way. It's, well, it's because of this. And, I mean, Kathy, I know you care about my kids, okay? I know you care about all the kids here. But in closing, when you guys are elected what's that?
Yes.
Come in five seconds. In closing, as elected school board officials, you, when you became elected, you didn't become my power of attorney to decide for me. You became the executor of my estate. And so, you're supposed to carry out my will. It's we're all here telling you what I'm ready to say tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
You have approximately three minutes left in public comment. So, I'm not sure how many left. Would be want to extend that topic appropriately. Yeah. 13 a motion to extend the
I would make a motion to extend that to 15 minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second to extend the public comment time to 15 minutes. Any discussion? You're none. All of the paper motions are all approved. Motion is carried. So, the next speaker on the list is Paul Trannell. Okay. Next one to sign up is Karen McCovac.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here today. I don't have kids. I don't have any kids in the school district. But I'll use my voice to represent the little kids that are being ignored. Last week, or a month ago, Debbie, she gave some examples of how little kids crying, spitting, tears coming out their face, it's a mess. That's not acceptable. It's just uncalled for. We have to come to an agreement. Something has to, we have to find a middle. Not one thing doesn't suit everything. It can't go one way, it can't go other way. There's gotta be something in the middle. So, my question is, would anybody be able to say, we've been in school a week and a half. How many kids have been coming into school with a mask? Just a rough percent. Does anybody know that? Can I get an answer on that? Is it 25%? Is it 50%?
To just a survey of students at the elementary. And this is not a perfect number, but this is close. I could get a rough number. I think about 25% yesterday.
Thank you.
And that would be at the center. Little school, high school is about 5%.
Yeah, thank you. So, right there, it's a perfect example of actions that are worth. Parents don't want their kids with masks. It's evident. 75% are not wearing. 25% are, which is cool. That's what they think they need. But not all parents think that. The superintendent came up with excellent plan. I fully support it. Happy meeting. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Teri Lindholm.
Hi, I'm Teri Lindholm. I'm a retired respiratory therapist. Some of my duties included being on the phone team, managing ventilators, performing pulmonary function tests to evaluate odds, and nuclear stress test to evaluate the hurt. I worked in areas of both large and small hospitals, working on P E's on up to the elderly. I know better than probably anybody in this room or a lot of you that wearing masks are not most comfortable for you to wear. Try wearing an N95 mask, plastic gown, and gloves, performing CPR for an extended period of time, then being in the patient's room for another hour, fully stabilizing the patient on a ventilator along with performing other tests. Most of our team is pretty well drenched by the end of some of these events. But I'm really glad that that was our protocol to protect ourselves along with the patients we see. Imagine performing CPR on a suspected COVID-19 patient and not wearing PPE, personal protective equipment. Then I'm going to see one of your loved ones to evaluate them. And I don't want to wear my N95 mask, so that would be I think most people would be rather irritated with anyone who would risk their loved one's health and possible life. There would probably be lots of sort of that one. Now, I'm not asking your kids to come to school in an N95 mask, gloves, gown, up like they're in a hospital setting. I'm asking that the kids wear a mask and social distance at the school while inside for just a little longer. I think it just makes sense to have the kids wear their face mask and social distance when they're inside. Some kids can look perfectly healthy on the outside, but believe me, they're not. Some are not. Some may end up on the ventilator and/or have long-term lung issues from COVID-19. Just one of our kids suffering from the effects of COVID-19 is one too many. A mask and social distancing is a small inconvenience in the grand scheme of things. The life your child saves or protects by wearing a mask and social distancing inside could be their classmate or someone else they know and love. Right now, our students under the age of 12 cannot be vaccinated against COVID-19. Clinical trials for COVID-19 vaccines began in March of 2021 for this younger age population. It looks like a COVID-19 vaccine will be available for them sometime between late fall 2021 and January 2022. Once all the students have the option, and I'm saying option, they're a student, to be vaccinated, then maybe we can decide that the masks and social distancing aren't necessary. I'm suggesting a mask mandate until the school age children under 12 can be vaccinated. Late fall or sometime in January isn't very far off. I think a few more months to be extra cautious is warranted. Let's err on the side of safety. I will be wearing a mask depending on the situation I'm in. I have the opportunity to get vaccination. Conscience tells me if I'm feeling a little off, I'm gonna be wearing my mask inside and out to protect all of you and myself from whatever, from COVID, anything else. I'm feeling a little off, why not just put it on? I'd like to thank the school board for their past, present, and future work. You as a team have spent countless hours working towards the betterment of our school and community over the years. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for considering a mask and social distancing policy to provide a safe environment for migrant children. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one to sign up on the list is Dave Gibbs.
My name is David Gibbs. I'm a resident for eight or nine years here. I've put six kids in school, told them to stay here. And some of them knew me as the mad man who threw his water bottles at the wall. I remember when I showered, I sort of heard about the vaccine tax that you stop because I'm really tired about it, okay? So, with that, thank you for the opportunity to speak. More importantly, thank you to the members of the school board for their service to the community and their concern for helping us, helping to guide the administration, faculty, staff, whatever school district, the education of our children. None of the five people on the board ran for the position for the fame, glory, or money. There are easier ways to get all three. I shouldn't try to speak for them, but I assume they did it out of a desire to serve, to give back, and to have input into the education of the children of the community that they love. So, regardless of the outcome of any decision tonight or next week, or next month, or next year, we owe them our respect and their gratitude for their willingness to serve. Thank you very much. Schools do all kinds of things to keep children safe. That's their job. Eye protection is required in shop classes and chemistry class. School bus drivers are trained in vetting. A school nurse is retained. The health teachers and staff manage school buildings. Unfortunately, we now have a school liaison police officer. Think about that. That's pretty weird. I guess it's the way life is, huh? I am a coach. A background check is required to confirm I am fit to be around kids. I am asked to learn CPR and basic first aid. I'm required to know concussion protocols to monitor kids' activity in locker rooms, today even on the bus when traveling. These and many more policies, procedures, and practices are part of a school day and extracurricular activities, many of which are about keeping children and staff safe. I am presently teaching a class face-to-face at UW Stevens Point this semester. As you may know, the campus has an indoor masking requirement. All the students and staff I have talked with are thrilled to be back to in-person instruction. They seem to know how fragile that opportunity is because thus far, I've only seen one student indoors in the hallway not wearing a mask. So, I'd like to speak to the fragility of the freedoms we have enjoyed this summer for a moment. We are naive if we think we will be exempt from the rapid increase of COVID infections incurred in the deep south. Most things take a while to get here. Usually, they come from the right or left coast. This will take a while to get here, but it will. The rural school district in the village that my family and I visit in Colorado is 400 students K-12 just shut down in-person classes after two weeks. Five students, two staff members test positive. It's coming here. This morning in the Washington Post, "It's Back to School Week for Many Families in the United States Just as Coronavirus Cases Surge Among Children and Teenagers." Weekly pediatric coronavirus cases surpassed 250,000 for the first time since the start of the pandemic, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. The data ended for the weekend, the September 2nd. More than a quarter of weekly reported, one quarter of the cases in the country are among children. Although most pediatric cases are not severe, nearly 2,400 children were hospitalized nationwide in the seven days pending Tuesday. I prefer not to debate the merits of masking or denial of personal liberties, but rather focus on keeping kids safe. That's one thing we can all agree upon. I'm not a doctor, or at least as my late mother was fond of saying, not the kind who helps people. I'm almost certain wearing a mask in school this year is going to happen sooner or later. I think we'd all prefer to wear a mask in school and sit unmasked at home in front of a computer. The ultimate penetration and spreading of COVID into and within our community will likely not come from school anyway, something those opposed to masking well know. But protecting our children as a whole and keeping them in school depends upon minimizing exposure to individuals carrying the virus. And since vaccinated people can carry the virus and infect others, we need all the safeguards we can find. We can make that decision now or we'll have it made for us later. Thank you.
Okay. That is the final speaker that wished to address the board. So, now we're moving on to there's no unfinished business tonight. So, new business, number five, discussing a possible action on implementing a metrics-based COVID mitigation strategy in extensivity circumstances.
The only comment that I have on it is I'd like to see the numbers be just a touch higher for us for some of those cases where you will have a family have, you know, three of the total cases that are allowed, which, you know, same thing with the quarantine. You know, right now, you know, those numbers are quite low. And, you know, one class will take us into the into the protocol. So, that's my only thing is asking that we raise those those numbers.
We went back, back and forth overall of the numbers should be. And I will say they're not, they're not perfect. I don't we may come back and decide that they're too high. You know, at the end of the day, make them back and say, that's too low. There was really a lot of discussion amongst the administrative staff. Katie was involved. I viewed it as trying to thread the needle of what we saw and when we started to have to take some of those questions into consideration, shutting down classrooms, potentially closing the school. And, you know, we faced, we did vote on those things last year. And so, the idea of those numbers weren't work was to tap those brakes for a couple of weeks at that point if possible. And then, you know, we
I don't disagree with the whole, the plan, actually. Do not disagree with the plan. I think the, you know, the low numbers, one family can just
The kid who is that family can be in all-in-one school building.
True.
They might happen.
Right.
And that's why we're all, you know, in part, that's why I'm also approaching
I mean, we still even have the opportunity to change it, you know, again within any 24-hour period that we want to. But you know, that's my, that's one person here, and that's a lot of people that I've talked to in the community, that's, you know, where I come Well, a lot of people that I've talked to in the community, that's, you know, where, where I come from.
I'll just comment on that too. You know, one point five is, is tight. We have a lot of multifamilies with two or three kids, parents, staff, teaching here. So, you know, unfortunately, it could be a weekend not school-related, and, and they could take us out. I think it's a great plan. Kyle and the administration appreciate the work. I think, I think this is definitely the way to go. I'd like to see it two and a half, is what I'd really like to see it at. I mean, right now, we still have the option for the people that wear masks, and we're, we're still moving for that and put this plan in place. So when things start to go, we can try to stop it and move forward.
I support the plan as it stands.
I will vote in favor.
Based on the proposal that I made a month ago, I, 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 I'm not digging down through this plan for just the opposite reason. So, I'll, I'll spur this as a compromise. I think something is better than nothing. But I, I can't support raising the threshold.
I will vote in favor of this plan so that we can move on. But I don't feel that it's the best means of protecting our students and staff from COVID.
Yeah, I view my, uh, first and foremost duty as a school board member to protect the kids and, and keep them safe and keep the school running as, as much as possible. We don't want to see a shutdown. And, uh, what changed from last time is, obviously, everybody can see the numbers, of cases are going up in Woodtown and nationally. And I think as a middle-of-the-road compromise and a plan to hopefully get it through the school a year with minimal shutdowns or disruptions. Because we're still going to be doing the mitigation practices, social distancing, uh, and, and stations and all that that we did last year. And, so I support the plan also as it is written. Any other discussion? Any other discussions? Okay. Hearing none.
You need a motion.
Yeah. I will, currently in the motion on the, on item five.
I'm moved to accept the discussion, or the possible action plan for metrics-based COVID mitigation strategy as approved by Superintendent COVID-19 five.
I'll second that. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Now, are there any discussion, further discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Bring to the chair, three to two. Motion passed. Thank you. Item number six, consider approval of CISA-10 facilities representative agreement for renovation of high school chemistry lab.
Uh, I'm bringing forth to you tonight a plan, uh, proposal from CISA-10 to, uh, work with us as our facilities representative as we work toward, uh, moving forward with the renovation of the chemistry lab. We're hoping, uh, to do this in lieu of really employing a general contractor who would act as our own general contractor. We utilize the services of CISA-10 as essentially a consultant in that process. Chemistry lab's a little more complicated than, uh, than an art room floor. There's a very specific ventilation, uh, pieces we have to link in that space, plumbing, uh, gas lines, all of that kind of work. Uh, and ultimately to renovate that space, we're talking about ultimately clearing that entire space out. Uh, the proposal, like I said, uh, is from CISA-10. We've worked with them in the past on similar agreements where they've acted as our facilities representative. Uh, and worked with us to come up with, um, timetables worked with us to come up with, bids, bids, uh, is those kinds of items, um, that are necessary going forward and making sure that we are crossing the t's and crossing the i's with environmental requirements and other pieces. This is not a small project. Um, thankfully for a couple of reasons, uh, one being the referendum, and two being, um, the federal relief money. Uh, we're, we're able to take this on and, and get it done within the scope of this year's and probably next year's budget. This will probably be a, a two-year item in terms of how the budget plays. We take the two years because it'll, it'll be summer work. Some will get buildings in June and some July.
What would you say the last time there was any type of a significant upgrade to design someone?
The class of nineteen seventy came from a tour and they remember the chemistry lab. As it was, as it is. So, yeah, nineteen seventy. So, uh, at least getting back to about nineteen seventy. Just one very quick item. The sinks alone are not within, uh, what would be the scope of a proper chemistry lab anymore for size. So, uh, this is, this is a significant project.
I wish this was not hard to see, though. Is it because there is no one who has.
Yeah, and so we work with CISA, so we're part of CISA-5, but CISA-5 does not have facilities management as part of their services. So we would work with CISA-10 on this, and we do this. We actually have a couple of different, uh, ongoing contracts for things such as our chemical safety sheets that we work with CISA-10 on, and asbestos inspections, things like that. And this is, uh, this contract is a time and materials contract. So they put a cap on this contract, but we're only billed for their time, essentially. They won't have any materials on this other than maybe some production of paperwork. But it's a.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of CISA-10 facilities respective agreement.
Second?
Yeah, voting in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of the vote. I have. Motion is agreed to. Number seven, consider approval of early graduation, full-on, more consent.
Uh, I will let Mr. Evans, that item to you, to introduce that to you.
I'm just going to ask, I think you did a really nice letter, um, if you have any questions. I think, Ms. Moore, and as I, as guidance counselor, we've discussed with the trimesters, we might be coming to different deadlines and kind of a different setup. Because going into this year, we're learning different things about the trimesters and making sure they get their credits, and the kids are taking advantage of different opportunities. So, uh, we might relook at the deadlines then with trimesters instead of semesters. So this is a little bit late, but you can read this, um, this letter, and it's well-written ahead on us. And that's his final. Do you have any questions?
I'm moved to approve the early graduation for.
Second. Sorry, second. Motion by Kathy, second. Hearing, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is number eight. Part of the consent agenda, consider approval of minutes of the fast meeting of August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All of the vote. Motion carries. Number nine, consider approval of financial reports. Any gifts, please, sir?
Yes, I have a couple to report. Uh, the elementary school received some school supply donations from Samantha Pembert. I just want to report that we once again received the, um, Solaris Grant for Community Outreach from Solaris. Athletic booster club, actually the football team, actually purchased, um, weight, weights in a weight room. So that was actually from a football team that is now being worked on.
All right. So, Gibbs, I'm going to take a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Number ten, opportunity for individual board member comment. Sarah Cathy.
Nothing.
Leo. Here it is.
Got to say something, right? So, I'm just going to say is, even though we maybe didn't unanimously approve that, the plan that was put forth that was of major discussion tonight, uh, I stand a hundred percent behind the board's decision that they made tonight. So that doesn't change me not being behind every member on this board with that decision. So, um, that's it. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Um, just a couple of things. You mentioned, uh, sports, a lot of good things going on. Um, volleyball started up cross-country. First time Port Edward's had a team here in a couple of years on its own, so they're out running. Good to see that. Football's got a couple of games in. Um, like Donna said, you, our middle school volleyball's going, middle school football, so try to get out and catch a couple of games. I think this Friday night is Parents' Night already, so there's only three or four home games. So try to catch them before they're done. And I try to catch a volleyball game or cross-country. There, I think the guy one coming up on the ridge is a local area, so try to catch the local athletes doing that, and good to see homecoming going. That's always a big event in Port Edward, so good to see that going and let the kids get out and enjoy it, and have a good fall.
Thank you, guys. All I have is, thank you, everyone, for coming and sharing your input. It's very much appreciated. I guess that's all I have. And so, establish future board meetings?
Uh, in October, the corresponding date would be October thirteenth. And, uh, just as a reminder, in October, uh, the twenty-fifth would be the date that we would, uh, typically schedule the budget hearing and school district annual meeting. And, uh, so those would be the two days of October. Uh, and in November, we'd be looking at November tenth.
All right. I'll call for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all of them say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We are adjourned.